It all comes back, members all come back.
He always thought we were having a way from sometimes.
Let the sister know that we appreciate. Thank you very much.
She said this way, let's be placed at the turn.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pamela Smith, you begin in transition, sir. Come up, please, Pamela.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Short. Six Ten Corwin Street, Bay Harbor, Georgia. Pamela Smith, forty-five twenty-two Saddle Street, West.
Any of us here state your...
Reason for being here.
Ma'am.
Our reason for being here is to ask about the disposition of the letter that we requested to let the Correctional Department know that we have come before you to indicate where New Beginners Transitional Center was being located. And the main reason aside from that is to reassure this commission that New Beginners Transitional Center does not house sex offenders and violent criminals because there's been some rumors being passed around. And we just like to reassure the commission once again that New Beginners Transitional Center does not house sex offenders, neither does it house violent criminals. And that's basically beside the letter.
Yes, yes ma'am.
We would also like to be on the fire clock meeting.
Mr. Chairman, last time you said you were going to bring the letter back from the sheriff where he had signed off on it. Do you have that letter?
Okay, well, when I spoke with Sheriff Randy Roy, he said he needs to speak with Mr. Paul Smith. And then all of a sudden, I never want to have on my phone vacation.
Ms. Roy, do we have a copy of the last time, last meeting we had where we asked the question regarding the letter and what was her response?
Her response was that she had a letter, but she did not bring it with her at the time.
Okay, so you have a letter in your possession?
I don't have the letter in my possession. I spoke with Sheriff Randy Roy and he told me that he would give me that letter. And when all of his take had taken place, he said that he had to get with Mr. Paul because you all said that you all need to speak with the sheriff. So he never gave me the letter.
Okay, so why did you tell us you had the letter?
I might have said it wrong.
Yes ma'am, we asked you and you said you had a letter for sure. That's why we're asking.
Right, and I might have phrased it wrong, but I did talk with the sheriff and the sheriff told me that he would write up that recommendation, he had no problem. But when this come about, he said that he needed to speak with Mr. Paul.
Mr. Chairman, until we get the letter situation cleared up, I'd recommend that we table this to further meeting.
Yeah, we gonna need, we gonna need all the pertinent information, you know, so we can all live with what we do.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, for the record, state that being the District Commissioner for District Four, which works well within, I was delivered to and have handed over to the clerk over a hundred and fifty names on a petition of opposition for this center to be in their community. Now, just so everybody will know, I did not, I missed this part of the meeting last month. I came in probably ten minutes after this happened. But I have familiarized myself with the meeting. I've listened to the recorded minutes, I have read the printed copy of the minutes. And I believe in there, Ms. Smith, you were asked the question, did the community support your effort to do this, am I right?
That is correct.
And your response to that was?
Okay, now, my neighbors on Saddle Street and ones that I know, okay? I spoke with them. None of them signed that petition at Ross Brook or still, they didn't even know anything about it. A lot of them was truck drivers and people ran panics coming off the highway that signed that petition.
Well, I can't, I can't, all I got is the signatures there, but I did look at some of them and a good majority of them are from the community, I would say that. And I'm not disputing what you said about people just coming through, no doubt some of those did something. You know, it's just, my concern is, as Commissioner Dixon, and I'm going by what I heard in the recorded meetings, he spoke at length about the community's support, our involvement in these types of things. And that's always a concern for all of us, you know, to know that the community does support it. And if there is opposition to it, then we need to, we need to proceed very carefully and cautiously and make sure that everything is made and everybody knows and is informed on what's going on and has the chance to say, that's my opinion, Mr. Chairman. And I'm speaking because I am their representative. And if you did come to me, I would speak on your behalf of the society. So I'm just, I'm just putting the information that's been given me. And I've read the meetings, some of the requirements from the minutes of last month's meeting. And I understand that you stated in there that there would be no sexual or violent crime offenders allowed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, now, the district, the reason, and I've spoken, the sheriff couldn't be with us this morning, but I've spoken with him at length about this and he has some concerns also in the, the fact that it's in such close proximity to an elementary school. That is a concern of everyone, it is, according to the Tax Assistants Maps, it's just over a thousand feet from your property to the school property. And that is a concern of both the sheriff and the community. That's, I feel, one of the biggest reasons these petitions was circulating. So what's your response to that?
The Georgia State ordinance sixteen-six twenty-four, sixteen-seven thirty-six and forty-two-one dash five requires all sex offender offenders to maintain a distance of five hundred feet from any school, childcare facility, ball field, or playground. And their location could be determined.
You, a thousand feet, just over a thousand feet, according to the Tax Assistants Maps? The ordinance says five hundred, according to the state law, correct?
Right.
So that would, you could interpret that and say that should you choose, you could house sexual offenders or violent crime offenders, because the state ordinance would not prevent you from doing so, is that correct? Because it's only five hundred, the ordinance says five hundred feet, you're a thousand feet. So if you choose to, you could house those individuals, is that correct?
But in our policy and procedures, we do not, no.
That is your, that's your policy and procedures?
That's partnership, that do not do that, who we're partnership. The housing partnership is what she's saying.
Do you have a copy of that?
We sent everybody, we sent it to the commission.
Has our attorneys got a copy of that?
Yes, we may be, but I looked at it, I'm not saying what provided, I just, I have written it.
That's the concern of the citizens, of that petition, you know, because there's some confusion there as to what, you know, can and can't.
There would be no, this, this particular...
Let me say this, please ma'am. I haven't seen a policy, I haven't seen any type of...
Was it emailed to us or how?
I brought them in by hand, I gave them to this...
You today?
No, at the last meeting.
At the last meeting? Okay.
Last time, so to begin.
Okay, all right.
No sex offenders, no violent criminals. In fact, we had some people that called from the community wanting placement, since information had gotten out that we were helping to house people who were homeless. And what we said was that we cannot just take people in without vetting them, checking their background, so that we would know. It's not, you know, we have children, she has children, thirty grandchildren, and grandchildren that are in and out. And she would not have sex offenders, violent criminals coming through her yard because she has children and grandchildren playing in the yard.
Mr. Chairman, due to the confusion on the letter issue that we originally stated, until we can get it clarified with the sheriff, until we can sit down and discuss it.
The letter was simply to let, to let the Correctional Center Supervision Housing Authority know that you all were made aware...
Okay.
Of what we were doing.
Well, and we appreciate that, but right now, the issue with us is the letters that you requested. And those have been your request, that you have a letter from us and that you have a letter from the sheriff.
This one there.
Okay, so that's another...
Last meeting, you said that we just let the sheriff give us the letter or something?
But you told us already, and I'm not going to beat the dead horse, let us do our due diligence.
Right, right, we want this done in order.
Right, let us do our due diligence. Let us take the time to review. And when do you have to have an answer to the Department of Corrections?
As soon as we can, everything else is in order and we were just waiting for the letter to send.
You say the Department of Corrections, is it someone locally that you answer to? When he spoke to that coach?
Mr. Redd. Chuck Chancy.
Chuck Chancy?
Yes, sir.
Is he with pardons and parole, who is he with?
Yes, he is, yes, he is. Chuck Chancy and, yes, Jerome Olden, yes, sir. And, and let me say one other thing that we probably did not mention. We have the right to interview anybody that the Department of Supervision would want to send to us. And we can refuse anybody that, you know, that they bring before us. It's not like, okay, here's some people, you know, and you gotta take them.
You have, nothing about their background, you know everything about them.
Exactly, we also get to meet these people before they are...
Oh, you have to make them an interview?
See if we can find, see if we can meet their needs. Right, if we can't meet what their needs are, then we can't help them. And the whole idea is not just to have somebody, you know, that's just released to come and sit around and wait for their other three months, because this is basically a three month thing where you try to help people get their lives in order, get established with the people that they need to see. If they had prior, you know, alcoholism, for example, we simply make sure that they get to go to AA every, every week or day of, you know, the number of times. And, and if they, we have nurses that, you know, agree to come in and check with them, we have other resource people that will come and work with them and...
This has a, you have all that in the description in this policy? Oh, yes, that's...
That's in our policy, but that's also in the housing...
If you'll just endorse my letter, I may overlook something, but as, as I'm reading this, what this does is, for those qualified grantees, and that's what you basically do, is you apply to the state to be, to receive these folks. They get a certain amount of money through the state for setting up these, this is considered to be a reentry program for felons who are not, and it says right here, not sex offenders, they meet a certain criteria to come in on a temporary basis until they can relocate, try to find jobs, et cetera. So reading this, what it would appear is that all the people who come here would be short-stay, they wouldn't be there for a long period of time. There's, this is, there are contacts here, there's a program manager, which is Marta Daniel, looks like, as well as, these are folks at the state level, and then we have a local contact where we could reach out to them and find out a little more about how the program works. But from a qualification standpoint, it suggests that folks that have certain mental health problems, they're not, they would not, they would be too extreme for, let's say, for this environment, they would be screened out. They, and they, it would, I don't know, but it suggests, it's implied that these folks are pre-screened before they are even allowed to be seen by them, so that they would, if they had a list, if we have three new, three potential residents that could stay in your facility, here's who they are, as I read this, they would have already been screened by the Department of Pardons and Parole to see if they qualify for that level of reentry. And the folks who, like I say, have severe mental illness issues, who have, who are sex offenders, would not automatically, would automatically not be to be on that list. Now, I'm guessing that's implicit, that's not expressed in the data. But with a few phone calls, we probably can find out and allay some of the concerns about how the program works. And so to Commissioner Turner's point, maybe if we can have a little more time, and I know you guys are ready to get started, but you have some of the very concerns that we, that exist potentially, I haven't read the petition, I don't know the individuals, but may exist for those individuals, those concerns too may be at least satisfied or lessened if we understand a little more about how the program works and have that confirmation from the Department of Pardons and Parole. One other question, Ms. Diana, do they have a description of the housing facility in there? What's required by the provider? Yes, it does, generally, it's requires, you know, that they provide meals, that they have smoking along, you know, they file a help code, they provide, they have to meet, and I'm just, you know, a certain number of square feet per folks, they have to have detectors for smoke and carbon monoxide, they have to provide clean sheets and a clean environment for the people to come there. But the structure has to be permanent? Does it say anything about the structure itself? Or can it be molded? I don't see any reference to that, at least in the material they have, and I, and I suspect...
We need to give him some time to really do the due diligence.
This, this is a programmatic form, so what you see here is the distillation of what will be a set of regulations that have been issued by the Department of Pardons and Parole that may, it'll be more robust than this. And, you know, this is designed to provide, you know, a general, and it's very detailed, but to answer some of those questions, you know, I'd have to actually pull the rig on it. Okay.
I have a question. You've screened out sex offenders and you've screened out the violent criminals. What kind of people are you going to have out there? You going to have burglars? They're not violent. You going to have car thieves? They're not violent. Thieves in general? They're not violent. Is that what's going to be out there?
You're going to have people who have gone through certain programs at the Department of Corrections that have indicated to them that they have made a change in their lives and that they're ready to move forward.
Well, would most any prisoner do that in order to get out of prison?
I think the people who would be doing the vetting of these people are aware of the state of mind, you know, of most criminals and have been caught with the people in Corrections and parole officers and probation officers. They usually can tell when somebody is pulling their leg, you know, and just doing what they need to do or say what they need to say just to get out.
Okay, so, so you would have burglars out there? Ma'am? Got them housed up out there next to the school?
But they also be supervised and they're not next to the school.
They're a thousand feet from it.
That's over a mile.
No, 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 it's five thousand two feet. The thing about it is, I'm trying to find out what kind of people you will have out there, and you want to dance around it without telling me, yes, we're going to have burglars, yes, we're going to have car thieves, yes, we're going to have thieves.
And we'll know who they are when we meet with the people who...
Why can't you call a thief a thief?
A thief is a thief, no, I don't want to start arguing that.
You're telling them, you call them a program, something out of a program, rather than calling them a thief. You call the sex offender a sex offender, why can't you call a burglar a burglar? Is, will burglars be out there?
I'll, go ahead. I will know when they are interviewed, when we accept people who have had a burglary charge.
Let us allow our attorney to...
Yes, thank you.
And what you can't tell, and we'll figure this out.
He has one other thing to say.
Is from a screening standpoint, we can reach out to the folks at Pardons and Paroles and answer the questions that Commissioner Dixon has, we'll be able to know what classification folks would be eligible. That'll be on this. You know, I think that what they do with this, what I'm, like I say, more general guideline is they, they hit the hot topics which the folks, they...
Well, I understand, but if Commissioner Aldrich said he had a hundred and fifty people that didn't want it out there, you may ease their feelings if you told them what kind of people would be there.
That's what I'm saying, let us, we'll get that...
The hundred and fifty people could change their minds and say, yeah, we welcome them.
No, we're seeing it from the same sheet of music.
But if it's people that's going to be a threat to their neighborhood out there, I'm sure they wouldn't want them out there. There's more threats than sex offenders and violent people.
Let us, Commissioner Aldrich has one other thing to say.
I think that we do need to give our attorney time to vet this. Perhaps he can do that. And I have in our presence the superintendent of our school system, and perhaps he's not even prepared to make this statement, and that's fine, but I do think that they ought to be considered in something of this magnitude, just their opinion and what they feel, should he want to include that at some point, whether it be now or later. I think we owe our school board that, and we certainly would want to hear from them.
May I just say one other thing? The people that will be there will not be roaming around the neighborhood, they will be transported from the place that they're staying to whatever appointments that they have and to whatever job sites that they were able to attain.
Well, that's some of the things that people find out.
Right.
They'll be rode in and rode out.
Exactly.
Our attorney can do that and give us all we have, ma'am.
We will.
We appreciate your patience.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in, we'll, we'll let our attorney, okay, wait the guidelines and hit you both. Thank you all for coming.
Yes, sir. Fun times.
I did not mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay, I was, I was pleased to be invited today. I didn't know what it had to be today until actually driving to work, but I appreciate it. I actually did not actually have the address until this morning, just earlier, a little bit later, but I did Google the address and actually just did a, just did an estimation based on the scale on the Google Maps. The estimation I had came up with about thirteen hundred feet, but I know the Tax Digest shows a little over a thousand feet, property line to property line. I did talk to my board members and, of course, the board members, well, the board members wholeheartedly were in disagreement with this because the proximity, proximity to an elementary school, which is K-five, kindergarten, five-year-olds through fifth grade. And whether or not we have violent criminals there, victimless crimes or not, you know, it is a concern. Our number one priority with our students in Ware County, from our, from the Board of Education perspective, from the Superintendent's Office all the way through, even though we have high-performing schools, and as you've seen recently and recognized, that seven out of our nine schools have been recognized by the state as being high-performing and reward schools. Academics on and off the field, inside and outside the classroom, we're always looking to continuously perform at a high level. Even with all that, our number one priority is always safety of our students and our staff. In gallup poll after gallup poll after gallup poll across this country, and Georgia's inclusive, Ware County inclusive, when you poll parents, although they're very proud of what happened Friday night on the field, although they're very proud of what happens with their children when they get the report card and going off to college, their priority is always safety. So we may have felons that have not necessarily had been sex offenders. Sir, you're right, they, they're felons. And I worked for the Department of Corrections for four years in the middle of my career as a, as a Director of Education. And so I was about anti-recidivism, I was about rehabbing these individuals. I would, my office was on the inside of the razor wire, so every day I went through the salad board and they slammed the, slammed the door behind me, so I was, I was back there for at least nine hours a day, working with these individuals. And these were sex offenders, these were violent criminals that I worked with on helping them learn to read, write, and get their GED, and then learn how to be electricians and masons and heat and air and all that. And yes, I'm very aware, very well aware of what Transition Center is all about, very well aware what that is, and I believe in transition centers. They're very, very critical. But I don't, I don't believe in, excuse me, ladies, I don't believe that they need to be a thousand feet from an elementary school or any school or even a college. I don't believe that's where they need to be. I believe in them, they have a purpose, they are critical, because I don't want any young person or middle-aged person or old person, any age, who's ever fell short, did the wrong thing, got incarcerated, and who are coming out and trying to correct their lives. I don't want them to be locked back up again. They're going to be our neighbors one day, and I want them to get back on the right track. And they need that transition, they need that help. But there are, the recidivism rate, back whenever I was an administrator in the Department of Corrections, at that time was like fifty-seven percent. I don't know what it is now, but it was fifty-seven percent. So over half commit crimes again. So I don't want, you know, that was then, I don't know what it is now. So I don't want to run the risk that over half are going to commit a crime within a thousand feet of my elementary school. The picture that I gave you, you can look at that, that's an aerial shot, you see elementary school, you see Ware's World to the right, you see fifty, I think it's forty-five twenty-two Saddle Street, that gives you a visual. That gives you a visual. I've not talked to Randy, I don't know where he stands on this. I've not really talked to anybody. I talked to the board members, the Ware County Board of Education is out and they opposed to this, you need to know that.
Excuse me, is thirteen seventy-six, is that the footage?
That was an estimate.
I know, but the lady said it was a thousand and this says thirteen, I mean, it's... I know, but the lady's saying it was a thousand, and this is thirteen, I mean, it's.
The Tax Commissioner, the office says.
Yeah. And, and I really don't know which building it is, I took, I took, uh, the two-hundred-foot scale and just pinned it off to the building that I assumed it may be, came up with a, and calculated and estimated it thirteen seventy-six, it was not scientific what I did. I go by the Tax Commissioner, he probably knows a better way to do it than what I did, and I did that just in preparation of coming over here. But I, I'll give you that as a visual. Uh, and talking to my board today, they wanted me to tell you that they're opposed to it. You know, the Okanagan Occasion, uh, we're leaving tomorrow to head to Atlanta, uh, I asked them if they wanted me to stay behind for tomorrow's meeting. They want me in Atlanta, I would like to be here. I, I don't have a guillotine to cut myself in two, they asked if there's any way they could postpone tomorrow's meeting that's here. I don't know that you have any control over the Pardons and Parole, that commission, that, that meeting or not. They wanted me to express that to y'all, that they would like to each and every one of them be here tomorrow to express their concern, that's how adamant they are. That's what they directed me to tell you, they to request to postpone tomorrow's meeting. That was their direction.
No, there is a, there is a, I have had Lisa to, there's a, uh, meeting at Pardons and Parole, members in Savannah, today and tomorrow, they're meeting in Savannah, they're coming back through, Wacross tomorrow, and I have asked to meet with some of the folks, the ones who are stopping on the way through.
Right, and so, it's logistics, logistics they're stopping by, so, and it's not an official board meeting of y'all, it's a stop-by.
It's a fact, it's a fact, just to.
Yeah, sure.
I'd highly recommend if you could, support the Okanagan Occasion out there, but we have some legislation we'd like to get.
Sure, absolutely, and I, and I'll share that. Uh, and Mr. Aldridge, if you could share that with board members.
I will.
Uh, exactly what tomorrow's meeting is, and it's a stop-by, uh, but I want, they, they asked me to pass that on. So, that's, uh, that's the board's stance, and that's, and that's Superintendent Front's stance on, on this. I don't know that the, the risk is, is worth the reward with this, uh, you know, if, if one, if one child was harmed one year, five years, ten years down the road, we would all be crucified. And, and us being crucified is, is the least of our worries.
Thank you, gentlemen, here you go.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Commissioners? I think we, I think we just, our attorney is there, the meeting tomorrow, let's get people, we just need to table this for a covered discussion. All right. Thank you, ladies, for coming, and you're welcome to stand. Okay, our next gentleman, Mr. Carl Sears, come up, state your name and address for the recognition.
My name's Carl Sears, I reside at forty-four thirty-five Fort River Road in Wacross, and I'm here today to offer some opinions that might not be so popular for some, and other people might find them extremely popular, but I think different opinions are helpful for everybody to take in before they make a lot of decisions. Okay, first, I'd like to commend this Commission for voting against waiving millions of taxpayer dollars, or deficit dollars, on the so-called East Bypass, for as we know, things on paper don't always materialize as intended and can have detrimental consequences. For instance, moving trains from blocking city streets to now blocking county streets is no solution to a traffic problem, just as moving traffic from one neighborhood to another would be no solution to vehicular traffic. But let's not forget that a former county commission did vote to support the East Bypass at one time, and you have to ask, what were they thinking, or if they were thinking? If Cherokee House residents and property owners are upset about traffic through their neighborhood, as I would be if I lived there, then let's make sure the right entity gets blamed for this particular issue. It's not the neighborhood further out who doesn't want the traffic either, it's not the individuals using this highway to get to where they want to be in the shortest time, it's simply the Chamber of Commerce and Development Authorities who have insisted so much retail, other commercial, and restaurant development be dumped in one place without a transportation system to support it. It's really simple, the corporate free model of development dictates that as a central area develops, it engulfs the surrounding regions. We have developed beyond what our transportation system can endure, and you're going to encounter more and more stiff defiance in consuming neighborhoods with any development plans. Thus, other close towns and cities need to further develop their own areas, support their own agglomeration, for it is not our duty or obligation to provide retail establishments or jobs for a three-county area. If Bacon County with a population of eleven thousand can have an industrial park that supports a large portion of its citizen, then so can neighboring counties. If Bacon County with a population of eleven thousand can have its own hospital, then so can neighboring counties. If Bacon County can attract us on Walmart, then so can neighboring counties. We do not have to be the provider for everyone around us who comes here to work or shop, then goes back home to nice quiet neighborhoods. We get stuck with the traffic, the litter, the noise, and you name it. They get the gold mine, we get the shaft, and it's unfair to Word County residents. Wacross is fast becoming a city of more and more Section Eight housing as citizens leave the headache of living here. Is this what y'all all want countywide? Whether right or not, I get the impression my government is not operating in the sunshine as it should. What makes this impression, you may wonder? Well, I read in the Journal-Herald editorials of a plan to give.